Counsel, I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry, but a motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda. All claims seem to be in order.
Seconded.
A motion has been made and seconded by King to approve the consent agenda. How about the voice vote? We don't have anything to sign. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. This is just public comments. Anyone who would like to talk to the council about anything that is not on this evening's agenda, now would be the time to do it. Anyone wish to talk to the council? Seems no one moved at all. Next is an appointment. Brandon Rice, promotion to sergeant of the office. Do we need a presentation from our department yet or what?
We're excited to move Brandon, I think, in October. Or no, October, about June. It's a good time for us to have some fresh space in there and some new leadership that was in the front of the prior. But I'm excited about the future. I know Brandon cares about Columbia Falls and the community itself. He's proven to be an excellent leader within patrol. So we're excited to watch him grow the department and take on more and help lead us even further into the future.
Thank you. We need a motion to approve that.
Alright, I make a motion that we approve Brandon Rice, promotion to sergeant.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the promotion of Brandon Rice to sergeant. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Hey, you swore that.
All right, Brandon. They small, you guys.
Much easier. Let's fly photo bar.
I state your name.
Aye, Brandon Rice.
Do so, I swear.
Do so, I swear.
And I will support, protect, and defend.
Support, defend, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Montana.
The Constitution of the state of Montana.
And then I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
As police sergeant.
As police sergeant.
With paternity, so help me God.
Congratulations. If any of you guys want to take pictures or anything, we certainly won't be meeting for a few minutes. Oh, good. Alright.
Yeah, I'm gonna say Rocky too.
Alright. Moving along, we have a public hearing tonight. A public hearing for Rocky Top Cabin's two lot subdivision. We'll go to our planner, whose seat is empty.
So you have me. So, mayor and council, looking at subdivision report, preliminary plat 23-2. This is Rocky Top Cabin subdivision. It is a two lot subdivision on 8.11 acres. The planning board held a hearing on September 12th, at which there was no public comment or testimony similar to your packet this evening. There hasn't been any additional comments added. This is a subsequent minor subdivision because it had already been split up. So the owner applicant, Herbert Enterprises, worked with both Breckenridge surveying and wet at 269 Rocky Lane, and they want to create just one more lot. And because of the way, you know, family transfer, occasional sale previously, that's why it has to come in now instead of like another family transfer. So they're coming in with this request. The zoning, pardon me, the growth policy and the zoning support this split and maintains CR1 is a minimum one acre. So lot one will be 3.56 acres and lot two will be 4.55. There is currently two cabins that you can't see in this aerial photo because of the trees. I think to the north on lot one. So what they desire is to split this into a two lot subdivision with two housing units on each lot, which is in compliance with the growth policy and the zoning. So the applicant is reviewed under chapter 17.18, the design standards for areas not annexed to the city. Wet provided the test hole data in the applications for the groundwater. The property is not within our groundwater protection zone. And the groundwater data appears to be adequate for onsite septic system. Previous nitrate and phosphorus analysis provided in the application for the original lot shows that the subdivision can meet the standards required by the Montana Department of Environmental Quality. The new lot will be subject to review by the ECU for compliance with their standards. So it's quite forested, which is why you can't see those houses in the photo, with defensible space around the existing cabins. With the proposed additional lot, there should be plenty of vegetation remaining. And so you can see in here, in the application and in the staff report, the photos of the existing cabins. There are no surface waters associated with the property. The site is gentle rolling with the greatest geographic change at the south end of the property. The soils are gravelly silken, which is common for that area, and it supports buildings in onsite septic. So effects on our local services, the Flathead County Sheriff's Department is responsible for patrolling. Generally, the sheriff's office has had a standard response to subdivision impacts, and that is they will address the needs of the county, but their response time may be slowed at many of the locations of the officers on duty. This subdivision is located within the Columbia Falls Rural Fire District and approximately 1.5 miles from downtown, from this station over across the alley. The property is mapped in the Wildland Urban Interface, or WUI, per the Flathead County GIS map. The owner will use defensible space standards to reduce fire risk. There are no impacts to municipal services as the two lots will be served by individual onsite septic and shared well. So there will be the impact on the schools using the countywide average of .35 school age children per resident. The one residential lot is estimated to generate perhaps one student, one additional student in the K-12 school system. So this subdivision, this subsequent subdivision does not require parkland dedication. The subdivision fronts on Rocky Lane. Since the proposed lot one will not, but a standard street, the applicant will be required to construct the driveway that Columbia Falls Rural Road standards through lot two to touch lot one and end in a turnaround approved by the Columbia Falls Fire Chief. The minimum travel surface for a rural standard road not eligible for annexation is a 20-foot paved surface. The new subdivision road is splitting lot two, and chapter 17.1409OB states that no lot will be divided by a street, road, or alley, right of way, or access easement. The applicant is requesting a subdivision variance from this section, and city staff recommends granting that variance. Down in the report, you'll hear that you're not going to build on the west side. It will be where the septic system is. So the property's never been in agricultural use, has been logged in the past, but not significant logging, just logging for development. So other than the road variance, it meets the subdivision regulations. So the granting of the variance does not impact, is not detrimental to public health or welfare. It only affects lot two. It will not cause any increase in cost to the public. It's simply a design element meant to head off bad decisions. In this case, the drain field would preclude the west side from being split. In other words, it won't be split, meaning that. The proposed variance has no bearing on the zoning regulations. The physical issues related to the requested variance is that the approach already exists in that location, and the drain field will be located on the west side of the road. So there are no other unit conditions. So the, like I said, staff recommended to the planning board and city council that you grant the variance for the road to divide lot two. So it's in conformance with the growth policy, subdivision review criteria, and the Columbia Falls subdivision standard. Staff recommends council adopt staff report CPP 2302 as findings of fact. Grant the variance to the road dividing lot two, which is condition number 13, and grant conditional approval for the preliminary plat. That does come council with 15 conditions. And I've been entertaining any questions?
Counsel, any questions concerning this? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing is now open, if you'd testify. Period, now, we propose that we turn. May I have a more?
I move that we adopt staff report CPP 2302 as findings of fact.
You seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded by King to adopt staff report as findings of fact. May I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Counselor Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Lupper?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Mayor Barnard?
Aye. Staff report is adopted as findings of fact. Preliminary plat conditions will be approved in the rest of C resolutions. Moving on. Item six revenue business. Call for bid sidewalk and parking improvements project. Susan?
So mayor and council, we have the project, the downtown sidewalk urban gutter that would be patented from the financing. I don't know why. Is ready to call for bids. And with that, because we wanted to be able to call for bids, you might remember we put it off for calling in the summer, because that's not a good time to call for bids. But call now, but we wanted to be able to get it called in time for contractors to come and do it before the snow flies. So calling for bids now. We're advertising on Wednesday the 18th. There will be a pre-bid meeting for the contractors on October 25th, and then we'll advertise again November 8th. Bid opening would be November 16th. And council, you would get the recommendation to award the bid December 4th. So right before Christmas and New Year's, just trying to work around holidays and contractors and knowing that if they're not working, they're out hunting. So council will award December 4th with work to begin in the spring. So the sidewalk and parking improvements project, as earlier described. And you might remember we have priorities, and each section is by, is individual, like they're each item one, item two, item three, so that we can award based on your dollars. So we're hoping that by waiting and calling for bids right now, and contractors are looking at projects for next year, that we'll get better prices than originally anticipated. So city staff recommends that you approve the call for bids for the sidewalk and parking improvement projects.
You make a motion to approve a call for bids for sidewalk parking improvements?
Sorry. A motion has been made and seconded, discussion? I have a question, Susan.
Yes.
Because we have this last year as one of our projects. That money was just brought forward, that piece of budget was just brought forward.
Just moved forward.
To the same amount that we had set aside previously. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just wanted to make sure we understood that. And the description of the projects, that first one is that First Avenue West over at the All Store, that they turned the trees out.
Yes.
With that, and then it's just small sections of sidewalks after that. And that would include, when they do that section of sidewalk over here on First, that would also include putting in that parking, angle parking there, is that correct?
I believe so. It does, as you know, the sidewalk had to be torn out because the tree roots had lifted it up.
And we were talking about leaving a boulevard and then putting in paving for angle parking to increase our parking uptown, similar to what would happen there on Fifth. Correct? With that angle parking, and then there would be parallel with the South Street. Another improvement for our parking issues in town. Hey, we have a motion for any further questions coming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved, call for bids. Susan? Wage openers?
Okay, so we met with the Teamsters. They came in a little bit later. So we ratified the contract, the three-year contract with Teamsters Local Number Two. Back in September of 2022, we had wage openers for the '24 and '25 fiscal year. As you might recall, the CPIU was pretty high. So we left wage openers, and when we met with them and went through the wage openers, which on their schedule, it was the same 5% on the base. We did adjust the lead operator to be competitive with our statewide, tried to get more applicants. We had 7.5% between operator three and lead, and we changed that to 10, which is consistent with our other wage scales. So we also negotiated, it's tied to the wage scale, that instead of waiting for the existing language was when an employee was promoted, we had a really interesting rule for moving over three steps and down and so on. We just changed that, again, consistent with other employees, that the new language is if you're promoted, and so let's say I'm on grade 12, step five, then I get promoted to grade 13, I'm just going to go to step five. And then the other thing that we did, instead of waiting for the employee to have already worked for us for a year in order to get, they call them in, in other organizations, they refer to them as lateral moves, we're going to place them on the wage scale based on the same criteria, but upon hire instead of after a year. And we're hoping that that will help us generate applicants with experience. So the union proposed that as a memorandum of agreement. And so the union has ratified this, those changes with the wage scale. City staff is recommending council authorize city manager to execute.
Counsel, motion please.
I move that we authorize the city manager to execute said memorandum agreement.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Seconded, any questions, amendments?
I do have a question being new to this. It says Teamsters Union Local Number Two. What employees does that affect?
Our public works employees, streets, parks, water, sewer. Or not, our floater parks, but not our seasonal parks. So our full-time public works employees. Okay, alright. Thank you.
Alright, I have a motion on the floor. Please, I'm gonna roll call, I'm slipping on the here. Go ahead, Mr.
Counsel Fisher?
Aye.
Counselor King?
Aye.
Counselor Lupper?
Aye.
Counselor Piper?
Aye.
Counselor Shepherd?
Aye.
Mayor Barnard?
Aye.
Agreement for 2024, Houston Local Two is approved. Next, Capitol is the police department.
Alright, well, we promised you the police department, Capitol outlay. It is, I'll preface this with, the Capitol outlay for the police department comes out of the general fund. Right, so unless there's any kind of grant funding or special funding, the police department funding comes out of our general government, similar to, you know, those very expensive fire trucks that we talked about last time. So with the Capitol outlay for police, we have, of course, we talked a lot about vehicles. And as you know, and the chief's going to just jump in whenever he wants to, but this is our newest car, the Charger, the 2024. Last week, it had 2,621 miles on it. Brand new, right? Brand new setup, fully outfitted. And that fully outfitting has started to become more expensive between the vehicle cameras and the, just getting them ready to go on the street. And so we currently have five patrol vehicles, of which two are being serviced. Well, one needs body repair now, and the other one is, the other Durango is, is it being?
Sheriff's car.
It's at RES. So the police cars, you know, we used to, well, back in the day, we got Crown Vics, right? And then Ford decided that they were no longer producing the police Crown Victoria. So we had to start looking for others. And we would buy with the state bids these vehicles in a large quantity. And then they would tell you who the prize winner was. It tended to be Bison Ford originally, and then other vendors, right? But the problem now is that it's hard to find police cars. So once we went from the Crown Vics to the Durangos.
Explorers.
Explorers.
Oh, the explorers were first, but you'll notice that we don't have any explorers in our lineup because. Right? It's like flash.
We were averaging almost $20,000 a year just in making these on the fourth.
And on one.
At least, some of the Durangos are pretty substantial, closer to 15, but it hasn't been as bad as the Fords.
So once they're repaired, like the 2022 Durango that the pickup on Red Road Street wiped out the side, we have a 20 Durango and a 22 Durango. How could I have forgotten those Ford explorers? They spent more time not running and had some major issues. And then, so the Durangos, we also have the Dodge Ram, two of them, which we like, but now we can't get, and the price went up. So that's how we ended up with the Charger, although it's a, oh, we have this, we stripped down one of the old cars and it's a travel car now, which we had done with the 2013 and so on. So we use them, we literally run the wheels off of these.
And these go to and from, the travel car usually just goes to and from the academy and then to specific trains throughout the state. So which part has its own, we'll say, but it's also used by city staff as a voice.
Pilot?
Yeah. It's out about, it's available too, but for the most part, it runs back and forth to Helena.
Meetings and.
Yeah. Or wherever, maybe on train maybe. So sort of have to take a patrol vehicle out of the rotation.
Right. So we have, so the 21 pickup has, you know, it has brand new tires on it. 68,000 miles. The 23 that we just got out of RES about the same time with the Dodge Charger has 3,947 miles. So, but they were, between the 21 Ram and the 23 Ram, it was probably another $12,000 to outfit it and put it into service between, because of the cost of increase in the vehicle and then the increase in the cameras. So.
The camera should actually be fairly, I said it's a new quote, 6,500. It was in 500, which is pretty close to what we were paying for. The big expense this year was getting the system in place, the wash cart system. So now, as vehicles pull up, our in-car cameras are automatically downloading via wifi onto our new server. And with that, we can also do recording after the fact. So these cameras are like T-bow, they're always recording. We have about 74 hours of footage that's not dedicated to, you know, the lights are on, sirens on, or, you know, we drive, we get recorded. There's about 74 hours of time there that we can go back. So if we had, you know, a suspicious person that we might have driven by at a certain time, we can go back in time and start to review a video as long as it's within 74 hours and say, oh yeah, there's that vehicle that we have in the past before we knew we were even looking for. So really good technology. And it builds into the future too with body cameras. The body cameras with the future budgetary purchase would sync with that specific patrol vehicle so that audio, video, everything syncs together. And then with the program itself, we can actually bring up multiple cameras and have them playing inside things at the same exact time, side by side. So if there's two officers on scene, both their body cameras would be playing in real time together with their, with one officer's audio or the other officer's audio. It's a really incredible system that they built. And then on the back end of that, there's also a case that we can upload every one of those documents, video, audio, even the written reports into the system and then email them to, as an attachment to any term that may be involved in that. So instead of sending them paper copies and thumb drives, they're actually just giving email with all that information in a digital folder. So it will save us money in the long term, just paper and thumb drives. Although we have to have a paper copy, obviously we have to have, you know, we're not now sending out five or six thumb drives at a time to a county attorney's office. They're getting one file, and then if we have additional information, just additional files that are going digitally, all traceable. So when the attorney says, I didn't get it, you can be like, oh, yeah, you did. You opened it on October 22nd, April 55th, yeah.
So your cybersecurity is being pretty good on all this stuff.
Yes, yes. So this system is covered under the same umbrella as our cybersecurity in the office. So it's top of the line. It's first call management. And if there was any breaches, first call would be there. Just like it would be within the breach, you'd see, they get notifications. So it all falls under the same umbrella, so it's very good.
So we're still trying to be very hopeful that we rotate the cars on a six-year cycle. That hasn't necessarily helped true after we went and hit the explorers, but we've tried. And in some cases, it was not our fault, like the car was towed by a different driver, right? But one of the advantages of kind of maintaining the same vehicle was that, you know, say the key. was that, you know, say the key agents and so on, like if you ran the wheels off of it, that you could, you could just move it over. That's not gonna happen for a while as we're testing cars. So the next, so we have five patrol vehicles. Unlike other larger departments or, you know, like the county, they don't have, we don't give every officer a car, right? They're, they're out here and they report to duty and they drive that, they drive that car. Not everybody's taking the car home. The, the chief has his command vehicle that we purchased shortly after it was, it was used to us, but in good condition. It's this 2014 Ram that is set up.
Lights, southern, uh, radio. And it is set up for, uh, like an E T M O data terminal. We haven't purchased a, a sixth one, so I'll use a grab, we'll have it as a landmark. We, we don't have it dedicated and, and used to that.
I, I have a question.
Yes.
You know, cars used to, we used to think that a vehicle at 100,000 miles, it was time to get rid of it. You know what I'm saying? Now they're saying that's not the case at all. So are we gonna be able to extend the life of these up towards 100, 150, 200?
You know, the, the last Explorer that just went out was one, one 26. And the problem at that point in time is it's either pay for the transmission in a car with 126,000 miles, or a new engine, or purchasing the vehicle.
Okay, that, that was an older, was that a Ford?
That was a Ford, yeah.
Yes, I mean, with these new doggies, it's, they should go.
They should.
With, with a good maintenance, if you've got a good maintenance program going out, they should, maybe we can stretch them a little bit.
And we're, and we're paying attention to, I mean, I haven't been super happy with the 36 and, um, Durangos. We got a head gasket out in 22, that had 30,000, 80,000 miles.
That should not have.
Um, we've had a water pump, two AC compressors, and I can't remember, I think they're, they're working on right now in 20. And just doing research back on it, the 36 is, is known for this issue. So the new Durango that's, that's gonna be ordered, uh, will be ordered, no, it's ordered.
It's been ordered.
Improved for order, this is at the 57, because it's just, it's tested. You know, we all know that 57 is gonna, is probably gonna run better, a bit longer. Gas mileage is gonna take a hit for sure. But I think in the long run, your maintenance, uh, fees, your less maintenance fees outweighs the, we ask the chief. So we're trying to pay attention and make sure that, you know, if, if certain vehicles are trending, and you only see that, you know, two years down the road, that then we need to, we need to adjust this to, to what we're purchasing. What's, what's the expected one for?
The chief, yeah, the, the chief has just, uh, just about 86,000 on, on his command vehicle.
Yeah.
So, and that's, and he commented on that we didn't purchase another mobile unit. Those rugby laptops are expensive.
10,000.
Yeah, about 10,000. So, we use them, we also pay for that mobile connection with the 911 center, by unit and by, basically by every inquiry. But, you know, right now, we don't have four officers on duty at the same, same time. Unless it's during, during another, like a busy summer. But, um, but the chief will grab one if he needs one. But he can legally respond to calls in the command vehicle. If he's out patrolling, he'll see, and then what are those patrol cars, or are not?
Yeah, I don't, I don't patrol very often, I do those, when it's not, it's not each other on the side. I want people to know it. When I pull up, it's a police officer. Most of the time, if I'm going up on scene, it's at night, they'll be called out and, and that's my response vehicle. Or they have a day, day off. So, but I don't control it, it's, it's always a patrol vehicle.
I have one question, because I, that's my. So the body cameras and the vehicle cameras, uh, they, they have to be manually activated?
Um, no, so, so if, if we turn our lights on, if, and records, it actually goes, starts two minutes back in time and starts recording from when we turned our lights on.
Oh.
Lights, siren, uh, 75 mile per hour speed, um, a crash. And, and then we can digit, and then we can manually hit record. And like I said, so as soon as I hit record, it actually goes back two minutes in time. Now, we won't have audio in that timeframe until, until it was actually activated, but we'll have a video of it.
So the body cameras?
Same exact, yeah. Not the current body cameras that we have, but we're projecting into the future here. And that, that quote actually came by, pretty reasonable, I think it was 15,000, I think we said, for 12 cameras. So that's something we'll probably look at for a two-year period or through grants or setting up on these lines. But, you know, right now, we're, our body cameras, um, you know, you, you have to hit record. There's no time before you hit record. And then you have to manually download it and put it onto a 2 terabyte file that we're gonna save for the rest of our, in the next 10 years. Where this, this system automatically recognizes what needs to be saved for what length of time. And if it doesn't need to be saved, anything gets recorded because we turn the lights on and whatever, it'll just permanently save. And it's on, so it can't be lost. Thanks.
So, as, some of you were here, um, in 2011 when we remodeled the police department for about a quarter million dollars. And so now, in the current budget, as we've discussed, we're replacing the flooring for about $20,000 with, and you can see it, right, like we didn't go do our physical tour, but, um, the carpet's in pretty rough shape. And so some of the tile area, so that's in the back where the tile is, that's the booking area. And you can see that, you know, where they, where they walk the, walk the DUI line, right? The, so all of the processing is back there. The quote that we have is to replace all of this flooring with laminate flooring, which is gonna hold up better. And then they'll use, um, what do I want to say? Airy of rubs, like under the table or, you know, and, and have the chair of guards. But it'll be easier to clean and, and maintain. So when you think about 2011 though, it held up okay, but it could have been better. The squad table, um, has been replaced a couple times. It's gonna be, uh, replaced for more suitable space. And the chief, when we do our long-range planning, would like to have room for two more squad computers. So the office, that you can see that office door, that's the sergeant. Um, adjacent to that is detective and then the chief. But there's not a lot of, you know, this is where the officers get to go and work. And also in our budget for 30,000 is a wall for the police department, to put a wall in between the processing and the squad room. Just to, um, full-scale wall right in, right here. We had talked to a local contractor and they said, hey, we've already got panels. We could just do this cross-eliminated timber wall, get a door in there, get your flooring. It will provide just extra public safety. So when we, before, before the way the entrances worked, victims and.
Suspects.
Suspects, the bad guys. Actually walked in the same door, right? Everything came, you came in and out of this door. So it was remodeled, so the police bring the suspects out here by this booking. This is the whole booking area and the holding sale, holding cell is immediately there. And this door, of course, is the courtroom door. So anything dealing with suspects, like if they have to bring somebody in to see the court, they're all on that side, right? And so by putting in a wall, and, and that, the chief has really investigated, like, okay, what would make this better? Um, since, since the remodel, way back in 2011. And so, um, by putting in that wall, updating the flooring, and then in the future, looking at additional, you know, squad area, what does that desk look like? And, um, we just, we don't want the suspects to, you know, leave the booking area. So.
Yeah, right now, from, from that position, when they're, when they're booked in, if, if, you know, obviously we're staying there with them, but there is the opportunity for them to run into the squad area there. You know, pencils and, and anything else that you have on your desk is, is available to them. So the wall will just be a separation. Uh, with the door, hopefully two plexiglass windows so that we, you know, somebody on this side can still physically see inside. And the wall just needs to be strapping off if there's somebody pushing against it, is that what you mean? There's, there's pretty good dog breaks that take place in the booking area, usually. And taking people in and taking handcuffs off and whatnot. So it just needs to be a separation of, of that area, so that it would be made a matter of, of, of the rest of the, of the department, so.
So just, just further, um, improvement of their, of their space.
What, what was the projected cost that?
The wall was projected 30,000. That was a kind of a spitball number that I'm hoping it is still, is still.
And what were we planning on doing that in this fiscal year?
Mm-hmm, yes, 15 year, 24 fiscal year budget. So, and then, you know, there was considerable remodeling, like rear windows and the, so the, this first set of windows, this, of course, is the chief's office and then, um, where the office assistant is up front. We've talked before, so the brown building, oh, there's the booking area. Sorry, I got my photos out of order. So where the door, where the police come in here in the booking area. So, we, originally, there was like two drop ceilings and you couldn't even, there was no natural light. You know, the police department, it was, it was not good. But, um, and there is a little bit of slope to this floor. So that, that creates a little bit of an issue because it's, you know, the end of the building. So, um, the brown shed, so historically, we've talked about tearing down the brown shed. This is for the police department. Stabilize the roof a little bit, use the sand a little bit more. The brown shed is, um, nearing the end of its life. But it's used, right? So we use it, uh, they store records in it. They also store lost property. If there's a car, if they impounded a car, it's, what?
It's so bad, man.
It does, but, but this is actually fairly clean.
Most of those chairs and everything stacked up there is just pending.
Or from the, right, except for the, you know, parking by orders, please.
And then the fire department tables.
Right, so when, you know, in.
A heavy table.
Technically, we've closed this out, we, we abandoned the alley. And, and so as we look at, yes, cars still use it, police come in and help, but technically, we abandoned the alley, like formally, council, you abandoned the alley. The intent is that there kind of be this, you know, this is cars park here, police cars park here, the access, which is far away from the public access, right? Because they're gonna come to the front door. If you're a victim, you're, you're not gonna see the suspect. So in the past, we've talked about doing something with this brand. Well, we were gonna tear it down at one point. But the reality is that it wouldn't have made that much more parking, but it's used. Like, I don't know where we would put the lost property or if they impounded a car, where we would put it if we didn't have this building. So that, that's.
A thousand square foot of record storage in there that.
Yeah.
Managed by the state.
Right, this, the back of this building, because you see where this wall is in that door? Well, you can't because I'm looking through it. There's, there's a door right here that you can barely see. So that, the back end of this building is record storage and has, um, like kings of value. And then you have the dog kennel for those found dogs. It's on, it's on this, on the, behind this, yes. That would be the south end, right, the south end of the building. So, anyway, um, and yes, if they have to impound a car, it has to be protected, so they've put it in here. So we haven't looked at other plans, but long range, either we need to rebuild this, maybe with a bigger structure, um, that extends. You know, when we, when we look at this space in between, like how, you know, our building is only so big, right? So as we add officers and we add other things, and it ties in with the fire department too. If we thought we needed to expand any type of facilities, this is, this is kind of our, we have this, right? Now, we could build across the alley that's no longer an alley, but then we'd have to look at how the traffic should relate. So this building, we haven't, you, you haven't seen it pop up on your capital outlay plans and what do we do with it? Uh, like I said, we fixed, um, the roof used to sand even more and, and it, we thought it was gonna fall in for a little bit. Fixed that, got the heater fixed so it couldn't start a fire. Fire department appreciated that.
Do you know the history of that building?
I didn't look up the history of this building.
The history of that building, in, in the near history, you can have it say, big, big, in near history, that was Larry Cano's shop. Before that, it was a body shop. He swapped that building for his space that he had in Old City Hall. He had the first three, um, places where the fire trucks used to sit. So that was just a straight swap.
And this was moved here, which is why there's no foundation over it.
So it's really old, it's really old, it was a really old, lovely one, a body shop, isn't it?
That wasn't ever added to that.
Well, and you can see on this little end, sometimes little critters get down under there, like.
Rabbits, cats.
Raccoons.
Raccoons.
Yeah, yeah, so if you ever walk by and you see little eyes, kind of be, um, so, anyway, that's. So then, um, kind of like what we talked about, you know, they always have those magic numbers. It's $20,000 to outfit a, to outfit a fireman. And they have all these pictures with all that gear. Well, there, we, uh, as negotiated, they did a uniform allowance for $1,200 a year then. You saw the uniform with Sergeant Rice. The body armor, those vests, um, we pay $900 or so. Those body cameras, 4,500, cell phone, radio, academy, duty ammo, tasers, and other, other things, you know, those body cameras are not inexpensive. And so just like we talked with the fire department, and with our, with our officers, with our 10 officers, 11 sworn officers, you know, you start buying body cameras. So individually, they're not very much money, but in order to replace them, you know, just like replacing the software, you can't have eight body cameras that work on old software and four on new. You really have to look at how do we, how do we do this? So that's saving money. Um, I talked to the chief quite a bit because as we talk about, are we competitive with other departments? Some departments also buy their duty weapons. Our department has never bought the weapons. And, and part of that is, is preference, right? Like if you're most comfortable with, with a lock, then if our duty weapon was something else, a sig, and then you have to go train on that and shoot with that. And then, you know, then there are weapons and the new hands and everything. So, um, based on the most recent hiring, we haven't had anybody where that was a, an issue, right? That you bring your own, you bring your own gun. And you, you know, obviously you have to go qualify, but we pay for that duty, that duty ammo.
Association itself, too, if people are, who, that struggle to keep that mission uniform, or they struggle to keep that mission firearm, the association will front them. They'll pay them back at the time. We're not asking, you know, and spend, you know, $5,000 out of their pocket to be, to be outfitted. It's, it's not a fair request sometimes, especially if somewhere, I mean, where people will be coming out soon.
And they might not already have an arsenal of weapons, which has, has really surprised me when we interview and then. My, my question is, what's your go-to gun if you wanna go plinking, right? Like she'd go first, I kind of look. Like she'd go first, to kind of look at it, like you're doing what, what? Um, and, and sometimes their answer were like, oh, my dad gave me a gun, I can, it did surprise me that these candidates don't, obviously, don't shoot me. I mean, I just thought that was part of what they buy, but.
The important, the important thing about this, too, is that we have to realize that, you know, as people come and go, we're, you know, we're reusing the radios, the tasers we're using, and outdated, you know, five years probably is required. Um, so these are not like, every single time we hire someone, we have to pay extra five thousand dollars for them to serve. Those are all reusable and transferable. Tasers are probably the most expensive here over here because of, you have to shoot two cartridges, each cartridge is fifty dollars, and they expire after two years, and it's, they, they've really created quite a racket with tasers, but they're a great tool. Um, so, you know, the academy's a one-time deal, and that's if they're not close to their clients, so, so a lot of this stuff is, it's, it's already in, you know, offers in the early on, there's a lot of-
Time for it.
Chief, are most of the guys using nines?
Yes, yeah, I think, I think everybody on the department now is shooting nines, other than one detective. And we've talked about, you know, the pros and cons of having the same weapon system, there's definitely the pros and cons. There's pearls probably outweigh the cons in the long run, um, because really the con goes down to, does that person not like that weapon system? Do they not shoot as well as they do with a different weapon system? That's the only, but that's a big one, you know, if I can shoot my six, much better, I can shoot a lock rather than shoot a six. I mean, where, you know, you can trade magazines back and forth if that's like you needed it, so.
So, um, all of this, all of your capital outlay planning will come, um, through in the final plan, capital outlay book, um, but this is, this was the ninja expert piece. So, um, next, we'll probably do streets and parks, and then we'll get in water sewers, and then, um, you'll adopt a whole big capital outlay plan, so.
Right, anybody have any questions? Susan, or the chief one?
I just, I'm having trouble, I, I understand the, the wall, I get it, because it, you know, thirty thousand dollars, is that, am I, so a test, that is not?
A lot.
I mean, but-
Well, they said they already had it constructed, they already had the pieces constructed. So, that was, um, when the contractor was spitballing, he said, yeah, we could probably do that for about thirty dollars.
Well, you have to put a covering on it, you have to put good doors-
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of little things thrown in there, so I, I can see that, but prices and stuff anymore.
And it's already engineered, right? They have their engineer that has engineered-
Cross limited wall, with his wall. See, if you'd have to get it there in two pieces.
Yeah, he said, he said it would probably come in two or three pieces, um, but yeah, like Legos essentially.
Right.
Yeah, just secure, just securing it so that it's not, and then putting covering on it.
Yep, and green on the whole side of the wall, and that's the nice part, is we got a beam on one side that, you know, and we have, um, a wall, what else, what's the-
Center block.
Center block wall to the other side.
We just need to get her done.
Certainly, yeah, and that's the issue, is, is we've had a lot of people look at it and say, yep, we can do that, and then they get busy.
Yeah, that's not that unusual.
Yeah, well, that was, so, and tasers.
Yeah, anything else, Susan?
Okay, um, Mayor, Council, Resolution Nineteen Eleven is the formal approval of your Rocky Top Cabin subdivision, uh, with the fifteen subdivisions, uh, presented in the Stafford Board.
Council now, motion?
I want you to approve, uh, Resolution Nineteen Eleven.
Second?
Second, the Lumbering, roll call please.
Councilor King?
Aye.
Councilor Lumbering?
Aye.
Councilor Piper?
Aye.
Councilor Shepherd?
Aye.
Councilor Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Bartoner?
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Pla, or excuse me, Resolution Nineteen Eleven is approved. Uh, reports, this is from Mayor Council. Please start calling this and turn.
Um, thank you, I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
I have nothing.
Oh, boy.
Okay, I'm gonna be the stigma then. When we had, uh, DOT here, they were talking about if we filed letters encouraging them to do studies and stuff like that, would we take any action on any of those, left turn signals or the light at the end of?
I'm directing the letters, and I have a call into Commissioner, um, Brad, so that we can, Houston County also has to request on, they're involved in a couple of them, but, yes, so, and I talked to, I talked to a couple of the DOT officials while, uh, the week meeting, so to see exactly what it is that they want us to be asking for, so.
Okay, and my other question was on Northwest Mutual Trust land, is that, where are we at with that, is Kim taking that over?
We have, um, well, they purchased a lot that, um, doesn't work for the, for the first two houses that were given to them, so they're thinking about building on it. The Department of Commerce, well, we got the contract based on, it might not, that lot might not work with our money, but they're looking at other lands, so whatever, whatever comes forward, whatever we can make work will be coming in. Um, and in talking to Department of Commerce last week, they also recommended that we kind of get with, get Northwest Montana Land Trust, where the neighbor works, to see, you know, as, as you folks know, in your budget book, you have a hundred and fifty-eight thousand in available funding, so do we spend it all on one lot, or do we try to make two, two or four more projects?
Or also now, we can do a duplex, a matter of zoning, or we can put two structures on.
Right, so, does that-
That'd be the best way to use a, a lot that's gonna cost us hundred forty, a hundred fifty thousand, is to get two structures on one way or the other.
Right, and to be able to accommodate two families. So that's, that was kind of that step back, um, councillor was to be able to say, is that what we wanna do, or do we want to discuss this later? So I met, I met with Kim Dorisaki, the director, before we left for Helena, and, um, I've gotten some additional guidance from Julie Flynn, Department of Commerce, and so we'll meet again and really look at that, because with some of those challenges, the mayor is spot on, and that's, that's been part of the discussion, can we, can we minimally help two families instead of one, or more, right? So, um, so that's where we are at with that.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing, thanks. I got nothing, I have nothing. I got a couple here. First matter of business is from my elder, who is a teacher, a fifth grade teacher at Basher Gateway. Basher Gateway, uh, is having an open house on Tuesday, over twenty-four, from five to seven, so the city council is personally inviting and city staff to tour the amazing new, uh, school that we've got. So, uh, you'll probably see some of these fires out, hopefully, I'm hoping that we can get this posted, uh, out in the hallway. So this is ours to keep.
Five to seven, is that yours, or?
No, five to seven.
Five to seven, cool.
I also saw on the paper, there was a, you know, Facebook about anyone at a tenant school at Kelba School, they get together for a picture out in front of the bell, so, uh, if you're aware of that, I'm, I'm obviously one and almost.
Got support group.
So, uh, a couple of other things from that, uh, the conference, and one of them was the head of the MDOT, and, uh, all the boomboys there, supposedly, you guys are really in charge, said how they're working towards being able to work better for the communities, and, uh, they're trying to get communities to share work, you know, it's, why pick the plow up when you're plowing if you're going to remove this for property and then drop it at the beginning of next block? So, obviously, we, we've already got a pretty good working relationship, Susan has, uh, gone with, uh, the Bad Rock Station Philharmonic, but they're gonna take care of the sidewalks as much as they can, so that's, between that, a snail, a machine to, uh, to clean those, we gotta be able to keep up. So we're already working with it, the only thing that I, I see is a lack of, obviously, is when they plow us up on the intersection, and that, that's obviously a, a concern, and I know they get hammered on pretty hard by our manager, but did not pick it up as soon as possible, but, say, everything else, they were a little short people, they, they're having problems hiring people also. But one thing I'm, I'm thinking that we could, could work with them on is, uh, when we have our intersections, especially ones like at, uh, the post office, and, uh, where you would turn to go into Smith's, both sides of that, fourth and fifth, and, uh, sixth, obviously, and seventh, where we end up at a berm across there and people are clamoring over doing the else. I'm hoping that maybe the city crews can make their priorities here, that they can go through there with a weed plow and just clean that out, so we have our sidewalk, our, our crosswalk is available, and the driving lane is available, um, and I now expect the state to take care of that, or, I'm, I'm hoping we can do that, you know? Uh, that, that was one, one good thing, I got, other things they brought up about working together and being nice and doing things right and everything else, and we're already doing a lot of that. They do, they receive a part of that stuff, so that was, trust me, that's great to hear that we're, I think we're ahead, um, and Susan's gonna talk about a, a workshop on, what is it, three twenty-eight or what, what was that? I hate numbers. I know you love numbers. It's three twenty-eight, isn't it?
Send them to three eighty-two, three eighty-two.
So there was a lot of talk about that.
Justin's already holding his head over it.
Yeah, there was a lot of talk about that, and how it's impacted, and, you know, quite honestly, there's, uh, what was it, ten, ten cities that are impacted?
Ten.
Which you have to have over five thousand, but your county, uh, has to have over seventy thousand, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it pays, puts us in this category, it's funny that we've got Calis Ball, Mike Fish, from the Falls, is, is right about it. So I'm hoping Susan's gonna present, we're gonna have a workshop, because there's quite a many information available to us now.
So, do we have a representative for MDOT from our region yet?
Yes, they, they-
They officially, now, it was tentative when he was here, it wasn't official.
Right.
You know, that gentleman, Zul, correct?
Right.
Yeah, because without that, they don't take any issues from our region without that representative on the board, remember, that's what he said. We can send letters all we want, unless we have that representative, it's not gonna go anywhere.
And he all confirmed with the key signage that it's official.
And I'm like, John, we missed that turning page.
The, the other thing that I did know, so I attended one concerning helping cities with federal grants, and, uh, how the state ended up that the cities were having to work with the state, against the state, against the feds and everything else, and well, now they've got new leadership with the state for the last two years, I believe, he's trying to change that, where, hopefully, and we'll, we'll ask Susan how it goes in the next year, where, because, you know, so we're working more together and they're gonna cut a section out, so it doesn't have to go, whoop, round, round here and here, and then before it gets to here in China. So, uh, I wish I would understand a little bit more about, uh, I don't do the grants around here, but, uh, it, it didn't sound like they're at, at, want, wanting to make it simpler so that people don't end up screwing up in the highway, probably with funds, you can get federal funds if you're late, and get mad allocated properly and, and administered, so. That, that's quite, it was, there were times that that conference was interesting, so, you know, it's been a long time since I've been on, but, that's all I have. City Mayor?
Okay, well, our, we did, uh, the land water conservation fund grant application for the, for, for the bathroom escape park, where we made it through phase two, the, um, program director, Sandy Crawford, head of government from Fish Wildlife and Parks, as they oversee it, came and did an onsite visit today, and said they will recommend funding, so that means then we start the formal grant application process, but that was good. They received, of course, um, millions more in requests than they, they have funded before, so they will recommend, uh, so we made it through phase two, but they'll recommend that we move forward, and by the end, by the end of the week, or the, the end of next week, we should get a formal letter that says whether or not we get to move forward. At that point, then, we start to put together the formal application with the, the preservation and cultural reviews and letters of support and everything else, so even though we're working with Bad Rock Skate Park Association, we're the driver, right? And we have, we're, we have to follow all the federal rules, so it, it sounds, it sounds, um, promising, you know? So, and then on our race grant, I talked to Jim Stevenson from the Federal Highway Administration today, and one more, one more department, wherever each CC is, because they do a lot of acronyms, they signed off, we have one more group of signatures to get, and I said I hope that's before there's any kind of federal government shutdown, so, um, our race grant, we are so close to having full signatures, and then on Twelfth Avenue West, I reported last time that they had a very positive meeting with Burlington and Warner, and, and MDOT, and they sent bad engineering comments, and so as soon as we responded to them, um, they said that we could do the lighting in accordance with my, to, you know, form traffic, designed that they would accept that, uh, because you might remember I reported that they wanted the extra lighting in that area. Um, I did talk to our EDA rep, and until we have the easement for the sidewalk, their, their legal, their attorneys won't sign off on the title, which means they won't give us any money, so, like, we have a receivable of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars right now, and it'll, it'll grow, but they won't give us any money until we have the signed easement, which would be an asset for the sidewalk, and then they'll release the money, so, um, so we'll just have to hold on to that for a while. And then, um, you guys have your budget books, although you're missing a page, uh, that we have, so you're gonna see that I amended our budget summary a little bit, um, trying to recap it. We are still gonna work on like a one-page, this is your budget, there's little budget facts for, for Mayor and Elder. Um, we go through the change in appropriations and, of course, the general fund, um, you know, and we discussed this, and that was kind of part of the leak, too, like, you know, the, the mantra that we are spending more money than our, than our communities are growing, you're gonna see in here that we talk the most about property tax revenue as we go through this process. It, it funds five percent of your total budget, but it's, it's the major topic, right? So, um, so this, this summary just kind of breaks out, the general fund is broken out because it's our main operational fund, it's what are we doing with that, what do we do with all these other funds, but just like the other cities, right, if we have, I mean, we have significant capital, right? We have, we have over eight million dollars in capital that's funded primarily through grants and saved funds. Well, when, when we look at that twenty million dollar budget, and eight of it is from grants or saved funds, if we weren't doing major projects, our budget would be about twelve million dollars. So, wait, wait till we incorporate in the race grant for a couple of years, it's a ten million dollar grant project, so we'll finish the water sewer, well, we finished water our grant, now we're working on the sewer, there's about four million left, right? So we'll finish that, you, you have your, um, street construction budget, you have your sidewalks and so on, right, capital funds that you've saved and planned for, so without capital, it's a pretty small budget, right? So, um, but it is, it is interesting when you go back and you look like, okay, we added the firefighters, we added one more police officer, we haven't added other, other positions. I did note in here, our budgets have to be balanced, right? The resources have to help to fund it, and then we, we look at revenues, so taxes and assessments, fifteen percent of the total, but that includes the resort tax, one point five million, so when you go through and look at property tax revenue- So when you go through and look at property tax revenues, and they only fund five percent, there are only eighty-six thousand dollars. But I did include the, the sample and the formula and where the dollars are generated. Now, we know that we're blessed, right? That we get to fund, fund public safety and reduce the levy fifty percent. Next year, also, you'll be looking at increasing it, right? Because you may not have seventy million to offset. Next year will not be a revaluation year. So, so valuations, unless they will do special session or play, do something, valuations will remain stable. So, you know, this, this has those charts. I did add the page as we discussed about urban renewal, the tip on how it's calculated and what it does, since it will appear as a separate line, I want it actually from this year. So just, and what the resort tax revenue goes for and where our other revenues come from, and then just general fund analysis. And then the budget books are set up the same way as they always have with all the notes and all the information. So you're missing, you're missing page two of the table of contents. So the clerk wants you to leave your pretty new books, so they can add your, add your table of content page, and then they'll just be in your note box if you want to re-sort it next week. They're gonna get it added tomorrow, but hopefully, the, the summary and the information that's provided will help you when there's questions and then file with the state. I don't know if it's uploaded on the website. Okay, but the books will be uploaded on the website. So we have those. And the mayor had asked about water loss when we were in one of those, one of those sessions. So with each of our projects that we've completed, ooh, you really can't see that, sorry. You know, we're, it's interesting because last month we pumped forty-eight million gallons and we filled out thirty-seven point five. So there's still ten point five million, or twenty-two percent. But if you start looking back, last year at the same time, the log, we pumped fifty-nine million, we built forty-six, so it was twelve point five million, so twenty-one percent of produced water. But if you start looking back, right, like, you know, sixty-five percent of everything we pumped was not, right? So every time we find a line, and you see that big hole out here on the corner, major water leak on that, on that service line.
They've been hearing something in that hydrant for a while.
At the hydrant for a long time, but then you test the hydrant, well, guess what? It wasn't the hydrant. And maybe I'll have a piece of pipe to show you what the holes look like, right? So they're replacing that service line from the main to inside that building. But we have dollar, sorry, dollar wise, gallon wise, right? It's, it's reduced pretty significantly. We see it go up during irrigation, right? That there's a little bit, you've got thirteen million, fourteen million, so before irrigation started, so that ten million that we dropped, I mean, that's half of what the loss used to be. And if you, and if you start scrolling back, like, you know, the sixty-eight percent here and the twenty-one, so each of those projects that we keep ticking off with, let's, let's fix this, let's go listen, has, has resulted in water loss savings. So it, there's, there's, industry wise, they say, hey, ten, twelve percent is normal. So just from meter fee days and between meter fee days and the meter rolling over. And, and we did significant analysis. So we had started replacing meters that were older than twenty years. Now, kind of like vehicles, you, it's hard to get meters. But we had replaced a chunk of fifty meters that were older than, older than twenty years. And then I audited those meters, and there was only one meter that read higher than before we replaced it. And that was because a family of, of a couple had moved out of their modular home in that trailer park by me, and, and their young family with three kids moved in. So we really started looking at that because of the significant investment and time to replace all these meters. So we went back, because there's no way we can replace all of the meters older than twenty years. But we did not find that it resulted in significant savings here. So, so for you guys, that, those, those meters start to slow down when they're not gonna work. But out of, out of fifty, we didn't find that that's where our water loss was, was in, was in older meters. So now, though, if a meter slows down, then yes, it will, or stops. Eventually, they'll just stop. But then we'll replace those. But between the manpower and the hundreds of thousands of dollars it would take to buy the meters in order to replace them, it's, it's not practical for a CBR size. So, so we're going to replace them as, as need be. But we didn't find that. We have found every one of those water leaks that we detected on service lines, and the mayor is spot on, out here, they kept testing that hydrant and testing that hydrant because you could hear water. And if you look at that very carefully, you look at that ditch, you're gonna see it was the service line that was leaking. And, and so we've, we continue to replace them. And, and we had, there was a, the line on Sixth, the service line on Sixth was fixed in July. And then in August, when, when they were working on the project over on Beth, and that old Dason pipe just broke, right? And we had a little lake, Lake Beth down in Talbot Room. That, that attributed to some of that eighteen million gallons of water.
I think overall, if you look at this, when we started this thing, where we needed to do some, a huge water loss, we were, we were losing over half of what we was talking about. And they also made a decision that said, we don't do whatever it takes to get this back down real easy. And now you look at that twenty-two percent, I'm really impressed.
Our savings, yeah.
Any money we've spent has been money.
Fifty, sixty, and I'll just go, you know, we'll chart this. But you, you go back to, you know, February of twenty, we might have only pumped thirty-three million, but we only built ten. We had seventy percent water loss. And, and so as we brought on that third well and as we're using it, right? So that savings, DNRC is much happier because we're, we're closer, right? To, because they would say, wow, this is great, but you lose a lot of water. And so taking those, I mean, they've been working on it for a long time. But you look at that twenty million pretty consistently, and it jumped up with a couple of those others. So I found it really interesting to go back twenty-five years here and you just go, look at this. Like fifteen million back in February of oh-two in the winter. And they were high. And when we did our last water PER back in seventeen, eighteen, and they're looking at those numbers, we were still high.
Is that when we decided that we needed to get that knocked down? Was that sixteen, seventeen?
Well, look at where we were, fifty-five percent, seventeen million, fifty-eight percent, fifteen million, sixteen million, fifteen million, eighteen million. So these were the numbers when we were working on the water PER. We said, we gotta work on this. And, you know, October, fifty-eight percent, where did it go? But, so knocking those down, and that was the question that the, with the mayor asked. And I said, well, we're gonna be updating numbers because we're encouraged by them, right? We, so other than when irrigation is on, it pumps up a little bit, but otherwise, we're at ten million or less, which is a much better number than where we were before.
Which, which shows that we have more usable capacity. I mean, how many service line replacements have you done through theirs?
I know you've had some examples, but do you have any idea how many we've actually had to do?
I think the companies I worked for, between my company and the other company, I think we probably did fifteen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've replaced twenty service lines.
We're galvanized now.
And then all of Fifth Avenue East North, and then those two, that other, the apartment, that very odd couple, couple that...
Yeah, so we're making...
So making progress, which is, which is wanted. So the urban boundaries, remember that strange map that we had before? The, the state did come back, they, they adjusted a little bit. And let me see if I can share here. Maybe I can't share it. Maybe on files. It's too late. Anyway, they did adjust it. So it was about funding and not... Oh, see, it's still, let me build it. And, and not our actual urban areas. So they did adjust, they took out the Rogers Room area that they changed to our urban transportation. And so they tweaked that, and then right above Aluminum Drive, instead of designating that as urban, they're gonna take that back to secondary. So, so those maps, listen to our comments. But they, it's based on federal guidelines and funding for urban transportation and not so much like our planning. So, so Dawn did mention that, you know, at the conference, the League of Cities and Towns, major topic, I believe for the attorneys as well, was all of the new laws going into effect either that went into effect October first or January first. Partly that Senate Bill 382. We had one whole, like, two-hour session with the Department of Commerce folks, their community, CTAP, Community Technical Assistance Program people. Because they're gearing up, as I had already discussed with you, putting together the team of people that are going to be creating, working with us with that, with that roadmap and what it looks like as, as we move forward. And so there's some pretty significant changes. And, and we have some questions too, like for our community, how do we want to best implement this? And so the mayor has recommended that with the attorney and the planner, we do a workshop, maybe in November, December. We don't have a November planning board meeting. I think we'll have an application for December if the Boys and Girls Club COP application comes forward. But, so there could be some time, you know, that we can go through. So the attorneys had training sessions, we had training sessions, and the planners already had their planning conference. But how do you, we have time, of course, we, we have time to implement it. But there are things that will go into effect immediately, January first, which state law takes precedence over our code. So we don't necessarily have to go through and make text amendments because it's, here it is, right? Here's, here's the new code. But Senate Bill 382 takes, takes some conversations and some, you know, moving forward. What does it look like and what does it look like for our community? So I played phone tag with our planner today, and I wasn't able to say, hey, what are you, what are you thinking? And, and I didn't talk to Justin either, to say, we'd like to, you know, figure out how do we, how do we bring this forward? What's our discussion?
Susan, one thing I did find out, that the manager from Belgrade was talking about that. They're moving forward with everything they'll do that they're doing, the new growth plan, they're doing all the updates, everything that, so that they're, you know, either making control with the MVP, we're gonna have cost of them six hundred dollars. Brown and Belgrade is, is a grown like that. Just that number just kind of, oh, that's awful. And they, they can afford it.
Because we asked, we asked how their, how expensive the housing study was. And people said, well, we're doing the whole comprehensive study, so we're doing housing and transportation and growth policy and PERs and everything, about six hundred thousand. But he said, yeah, housing might be about seven point five thousand. They did just, however, approve a three thousand unit subdivision. And, and their fight with Montana Department of Quality was that current law, current law with E2 requires you to show that you have capacity now for that three thousand...
For something that's gonna be built out in ten or twenty years.
That three thousand unit subdivision that could be ten to twenty years out.
So they're looking at another forty-five million dollars for additional school plan. They already spent forty-five.
So, and it was interesting, because there are, as, as the mayor indicated, there are ten cities that were in the mix now. And then others, like Lewistown, the county doesn't mean it, but they may opt in. And then others are automatically in with the next census. And, and so, but between, between the CTAP folks, Department of Commerce, and League of Cities and Towns, and the attorneys and planners, they're, they're, they're getting all those pieces together. So we had lots of, there was a lot of good information. And I mentioned to the, to the mayor, when we're talking about communication and how things work and how people think they work, that, but we're sitting there saying, well, we already do this. Like, they might recommend that, you know, you explain the public hearing process. But Mayor Barnhart already does that. So we're gonna take your comments.
There's a lot of places that don't.
Right. So it, so there were, there were a couple that we walked out and going, okay, we already did that. But we do what they're recommending, and so it felt kind of, it felt good.
So next meeting then we'll decide when we're gonna have that work session?
Yes, yeah, we can, we'll get with Eric and figure out what, what's applicable then and what that timeline looks like.
And then you can just email it and we can come up with that date of the fall schedule.
So Mayor mentioned you're gonna be absent from that next November sixth meeting.
That's the one we're gonna have.
So at this point, we don't have any hearings on the agenda. In fact, it'd be a pretty scant agenda. Excellent.
Come on, Jane. Susan, are you done?
I'm done.
Yeah, before we move on, there was something, actually a couple of things. I have a question for you. Boys and Girls Club property, how is that, how is that number called? Where are we at on that?
The, the Boys and Girls Club now has to submit a conditional use permit for their building. Because it's, it is residentially zoned, but just like the church is in conditional use, the, the Boys and Girls Club Community Center is also a conditional use. So the, the club is working on submitting their application to our planner, and they didn't have it completed in time for the November hearing. That's why I said I believe we'll have a December hearing for the conditional use permit.
And another thing, you know, with our capital improvement reports and everything, we're in the fire department. I went over and I had a visit with the chief and some firefighters and thing after that. And, you know, I, I'm hoping that it's obviously not this fiscal budget we're in now, but the next one we showed, we're gonna put a fourth firefighter on. I think that should be one of our priorities, is get the fourth firefighter on. How are we funding that if we're gonna depart with, with the camera, with the girl or not? But that would allow them the ability to keep three people there instead of one off the training, one sick, whatever. But they think that that's very important, so I just have to bring it out now. So it's kind of like a capital project. That's the, that's all. And again, I remind everybody, including the hungry boys who are... Republicans invited to this, please come and look at our new, like, twenty-two million dollar school? Okay, City Attorney, do you have anything for us?
Just echoing the, I think, the value of the, both the NMIA Defense Council Summit, which was on Wednesday. They, for the first time, they paired both those events so that the Defense Council Attorneys that NMIA hires to defend cities and city attorneys, which Stephanie and I kind of feel vulnerable because we defend certain cities around the state too. because we defend certain cities around the state too, could come together and be consecutive Defense Councilmen and move right into the city attorney conference. So that was good. So Stephanie and I were there for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. I thought there were some great presentations on marijuana DUIs, great information on that. A I, interestingly enough, and the role that A I can play in really creating some amazing efficiencies in some of those things that cities and towns need to do, including grant writing. Land use, of course, a huge portion dedicated to the changes in land use. And then social media goes by elected officials. So I can cover some of those things as we progress through our coming meetings, and we need some snapshots of what we cover, really great stuff, almost, has a really good value.
I saw you had a lot of things on the agenda.
Yeah.
Chief, do you have anything?
I appreciate it.
All right.
I moved the adjutant.
Second. We're debating second, all the way.